Like this? What's he doing this? It's not that way. He's just in the back. Alright. That's a fire. How's it going, man? Yeah, um... Yeah, he is not here yet. I sound very excited, I should know that. This place feels like... That is a nice area. There we go. I can put my head down and work. Guess I'm not hearing you right here, but okay. I think... Yeah, they gave us a thumbs up. We're good. Okay, cool. Oh, I think you hold it, I think you hold on to it, maybe hold it up in the air. Or actually, you see the lady in the back with the sweater? Talk to her, I think she's... Yeah, no problem.
Alright, good evening. Everyone here, my name is Dr. Charles Ferguson. I am a pastor of Columbia Methodist Church. And I'm glad that this event, being a location for us to be able to have this forum, um, I believe it's important that we have the opportunity to know about those that plainly run for office. Also, to understand that in this instance, it's very important that as a voter, you get to vet those who want to take on the responsibility of trying to aid our children in having the best education possible. So it is our honor and privilege to have this event here. And we are glad that you have come. And for all those that are online with us, glad that you are watching via the stream. Um, if you are online, make sure that you share your link with anybody on Facebook or even on our YouTube page as well. So at this time, we're not going to belabor the time. We're going to turn it to the hands of our moderators and they will introduce themselves to all of you and we will go forward.
Hey y'all, I'm Marielle. Welcome to the exhibit for the Independence Foundation of Columbus City Schools organized by the Association of Teachers and Congresswoman Lemon. Obviously, we just call this one "The Contest for Success." I'm Marielle Lemon, and I'm here to speak often to students who are more a member of Columbia State University, who have been successful in their career. But I'm glad someone really came to be here. We wanted to do something a little different than this one today. The meeting center of students, our educators, and community members, like four questions are asked, and we're voting, voting is, and then go to the poll and vote next month. Our moderators have got a lot of support. There are technical issues coming with three open positions, so we have to wait. There'll be primary elections on May 6th, and also the general election, which is scheduled for November 4th. So we encourage everybody to think of voting plan for May, um, May 6th primary. There are already three days to vote. So early voting already started April 8th, just this week, at the Franklin County Board of Elections on Moore Street. And you can go there and vote with person if you want to vote a female. You need to submit a written absentee ballot request form to the Board of Elections. Or you can show up at your voting location, of course, on Election Day Tuesday, May 6th, between 6:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. So now, it's my pleasure to hand it over to CCS educator Courtney Johnson, who's going to tell us about tonight's moderators. Thank you.
I, um, Courtney Johnson, I am a long-time educator in Columbus City. I'm a four-haged. I'm here with the Columbus Education Jones Coalition to introduce you to our wonderful moderators. First is Dr. Cindy Jones Jr., a native of Baldwin, Louisiana. Cindy Jones Jr. graduated from Louisiana State University with a Bachelor of Arts in English and Creative Writing, and a Master's Degree in Secondary Education. After relocating to Columbus, Cindy later continued his studies and earned a doctorate in Educational Leadership from Ohio University. For the past 26 years, Dr. Jones has been an educator in Columbus City schools. He's been a high school English teacher, instructional coach, and currently serves as a district, the district as a secondary leadership specialist. And helping him out tonight, our second moderator is Rashawna Catrell, a sophomore at Walnut Ridge High School, where he's a very active member of the school's community. He's a part of Walnut Ridge Student Government, has been a leader of the Story of Justice Program, plays meluluon in the school band, and he helps out with the reporting announcement. Outside of school, he likes to sing and produce music and volunteers, thank you, with the Exclusive Empowerment Network, helping to feed the unhoused. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Take it away, friends.
Hello, my name is Rashawna Catrell. I'm a student at Walnut Ridge High School. Welcome to this Meet the Candidate Forum for Candidates Running in Columbus City Schools' Board's Race. We hope that this will provide you with the information for upcoming November's election. We will begin by explaining our procedures, which we are agreed to by all participants in advance.
Good evening, uh, candidates and, uh, participants and members. Uh, tonight, each candidate will give a one-minute introductory statement. I will then ask questions and candidates will be permitted no more than 90 seconds to answer each question. Due to time constraints, not every candidate will answer each question. We will change the order in which candidates are asked a question for each subsequent quest, question. Candidates will have one minute to give a closing statement. Some of the questions have been pre-written and the remainder will be solicited from the audience. Audience members who wish to ask a question will submit the question in writing. Volunteers will review the question before handing it to the moderators. The forum organizers reserve the right to reject audience questions if they are inappropriate or duplicative. Uh, the candidates can see our timekeeper, who will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when their time is expired. If a candidate continues speaking, we will say "thank you" politely and move on.
We will now hear from our candidates running for Columbus City School Board. Candidates begin with a one-minute introduction and we will continue down the table in order. Liz Caslin Turner.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Liz Caslin Turner and I'm running for Columbus City School Board. Um, first, I want to thank the organizations. Both of these organizations, the hosting tonight, um, I have deep partnership with. Um, so thank you for hosting this important conversation here tonight. I am running because public education is a right and not a privilege. Um, navigating school with dyslexia taught me firsthand the challenges faced by students and how important it is for each student to have the supports they need to succeed. So that whole experience shaped my whole passionate commitment into ensuring that every family, every student, every teacher in Columbus City schools has the resources they need to thrive. For over 10 years, I've worked as an educator and as a policy advocate at the state level. I've witnessed the creativity and brilliance of my students in my classroom every day. Now, I kind of focus on preparing technical education programs that prepare students for these 21st opportunities that are now coming into Columbus, Ohio, and throughout our state. Um, my name is Liz Caslin Turner and I'm asking you for your vote and your support. Thank you.
No, thank you. Teresa Hannah.
Good evening, my name is Teresa Hannah. I'm the founder of Step Forward Education Support Services. I am running, not just for a seat on the board, I am running to be a voice for all of the kids who live in the Columbus City School District. I want to see where we are creating a pipeline to learn, earn, and thrive for all of our students. Starting with kindergarten readiness at age four, I want to see where we bring back, uh, skill traits and also increasing our graduation rates, but also to make sure that we are providing all of the resources that our students need. And so, I would like to see where we give them the resources, because we are being touted as the next tech hub. How does that trickle down to Columbus City School students? And I want to make sure that we have all the tools and resources that they need to not just be academically successful, but that they are prepared for life beyond high school. Thank you.
No, thank you. Patrick Katzenmeyer.
Nailed it, thank you. Uh, Patrick Katzenmeyer, um, I, uh, I'm running because I have, uh, three kids in the district. They're, uh, nine, six, and, uh, and four. And our neighborhood school, uh, where they go was on the, uh, the closure list last year, which kind of threw our whole neighborhood into, um, uh, into disarray and, um, caused a lot of problems with the school. Even though it wasn't closed, our principal left, our secretary left, um, and my daughter's, uh, pre-K class next year is only half full. So, um, my, my background is, uh, I got out of, went to OU, got out of college, worked for a minority leader at the time, Joyce Beatty, Ted Strickland, on the Obama campaign. Um, and then for the last 10 years, I've been, uh, working on public sector, uh, uh, projects, rec centers, um, libraries, things like that. So I want to bring that progressive background and the kind of facilities management and planning background to, uh, the Board of Education and create some stability there. Thank you.
No, thank you. Jermaine Kennedy.
Good evening, uh, my apologies for, from, for my tardiness. Uh, I'm a 20-year educator, worked in, as a, as a teacher, principal, youth development leader. Currently, I'm the, the chief program officer with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio. I'm running because the, the Columbus City School has so much potential, from the bright students that we have, dedicated teachers, uh, and the community that cares. But the leadership has, has been lacking, particularly at the board level. Uh, leadership that's focusing on students, leadership that, uh, is, is vision, has a, a forward vision, uh, and, and leadership that, that really centers the community's voice as well. And so, part of my role and, and all of my roles has been to build collective impact, build community partnerships, bring people together so we can solve problems. And there's a, a lot of problems that need to be solved in Columbus City schools right now. Thank you.
No, thank you. Janice Keys.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Keys for Columbus City Schools, keys unlocking opportunities. My name is Janice Keys and I am running for Columbus City School Board because I believe in the power of education. I am, was, I am the single mother of four children who came through Columbus City Schools. And one is a car, uh, mechanic, one is a learning and, uh, development expert, a nurse, as well as a operations supervisor. I understand the importance of having great teachers, great access to resources, great environments for our students to propel forward. As a director of provider experience, I serve over 60,000 providers in our state, ensuring that they are educated so that they can take care of our engine workers. I will bring the same skill set to the Columbus City School Board to ensure our teachers receive the things that they need, as well as our students and our parents. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. Carrie Lumpkin.
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Carrie Lumpkin. I'm very excited to be here. Most of all, I get excited when I see the community. Yes, I am running for a Columbus School Board, but my main reason for running is I truly believe that no matter what area code or what area you live in, you should have a good value education. I had the privilege of my working term, I had the privilege of doing Ohio Reads, which helped kids who were slow on learning or was behind on learning, and helped the teachers. I also did court of importance special advocate. I always had a place for kids. I always had a heart for the kids to learn. And equal opportunity is my biggest passion. I have a granddaughter right now that is in Columbus City Schools. Guess what? I can't do this by myself. I need you to vote. Vote for Carrie Lumpkin, Columbus City Schools. Thank you.
No, thank you. Munir Lynch.
Okay, you're good. Good evening, my name is Munir Lynch. My pronouns are he and him. I'm running for Columbus City School Board this year. I'm a proud product of Columbus City Schools and I have multiple years of experience as a guest educator, as a health educator, in every single one of our middle schools in Columbus City Schools. Both of these experiences made me the person that I am today and led me to understand that while I'm so proud of our district, I'm so proud to have been built up by this district, we have so many challenges. And we deserve so much better than what we're getting in a time where we're dealing with an emergency. We're dealing with multiple systems that do not want us to succeed. We are being blamed for the problems that systems have created for us. And it's frankly unfair and we need qualified leadership that can get us through. I currently work as a community engagement specialist, developing infectious disease programs for federally qualified health centers. Um, and so I know what it's like to navigate challenges. Uh, thank you for your time today.
No, thank you. Kimberly Mason.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome for, welcome and joining this conversation. I appreciate you making space. My name is Kimberly Mason. I live on the south side of town. I am a parent and also taxpayer in Columbus City School District. I bring to you over 17 years of experience in mental health, higher education, and financial services. By way of mental health, I had the opportunity of supporting, uh, kids who were dealing with drugs and recovering, and with higher education, creating curriculum and pathways for student success. My goal here is as simple as my platform, Community Conversations and Success. That's CCS at its core, and I'm here to help connect better with the community and make sure that the resources that we need as a thriving entity, that we can make sure that our students are self-sufficient individuals, that our workforce development is strong, and that when it looks to what CCS is going to move forward to from self-sufficient students, we have that here in our own backyard. At the end of the day, I spend my day, uh, working with organizations that are focused on workforce development, and at night, I listen to the community who's looking to move forward. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
No, thank you. Antoinette Miranda.
Thank you, I'm Dr. Antoinette Miranda, lifelong resident of Columbus, Ohio. I am a professor of school psychology and chair of the Department of Teaching and Learning at the Ohio State University for the past 37 years. I have a husband who is a teacher in Columbus City, he's been there 35 years, and I have two children that have graduated from Columbus City Schools. I just completed an eight-year term on the State Board of Education. And the reason that I'm here is I've done both professionally and personally, spent a lot of time in my 37 years in Columbus City Schools. I was a PTA president, secretary in the PTO, worked concession stand for many, many years, and, um, my research was laser-focused on how urban schools can be effective and how we can close the opportunity gap. So I believe I bring the expertise, I also bring the experience of understanding policy and legislation through my experience on the State Board of Education. And I believe I can be an asset to the Columbus City School Board. I believe in Columbus City Schools.
Thank you. Next we have is Julie Trabold.
Hi, I'm Julie Trabold. I'm running for Columbus City School Board, Bold for Schools. I have been a single mom for 16 years. I am a CCS mom, I'm a nurse. I have worked in finance and in business development. I don't talk about my background in finance very often, but I have done hundreds of financial plans, getting people and businesses from where they are to their goals and how to get them there. My vision for Columbus City School Board is to bring in investors and to have an established, free, universal childcare. I know that we can do this and we can pioneer it for the state of Ohio through our district. We have the largest public school district in our state and we have one of the largest cities in the country. I believe through our public schools, it is the ultimate way that we fight back against the regime trying to take over our federal government. What brought me and my family into this district was Columbus Gifted Academy. We were studying in a public school district in a suburb, and there are no suburbs in our central Ohio that can meet our needs, except CCS. Bold for Schools, Julie Trabold.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's get this party started. So, we both have chosen some initial questions that are like near and dear to our, ourselves. Uh, so I will do the first question and we'll have this, uh, for the first five candidates. Um, how would you strengthen community and collaboration? I'm sorry, how would you strengthen communication and collaboration between school administration, families, and community members to ensure all voices are being heard? And we'll start with Ms. Caslin Turner.
I want to thank you for that question. Um, as a current minute, uh, current member of the Academic and Facilities Alignment Committee by Columbus City Schools, um, I think starting with transparency. So as a member of this, of this committee, I openly share communications that I have with community members. Um, so for instance, out in the community, speaking with parents, um, I bring concerns from the community and I pose it to the board. Um, for instance, advocating for early screening pre-K, transparency. So having those communications and being open and honest and actually surveying, what is the main issue in our community? Asking parents, asking teachers, um, really, I would say, information gathering, uh, which is also a number one, um, moving forward in proper and effective board governance. Um, so being a part of these communities and I would say transparency and asking for input, um, I think that's the step forward, I would say, in building community and strengthening and also regaining the trust of our community. Um, I believe that's the first initial step in moving forward and being successful.
Thank you. Ms. Hannah.
I believe that it is important that we not only collaborate with all of the stakeholders, we must also continue to engage, be transparent, but also accountability. Because I feel that we need fresh leadership, we also need to make sure that our board members and the administration are working together. We have to go out into the community and like you said, to get feedback. Feedback can tell us what we're doing right or wrong, what is missing, and what we need to continue to do to move forward with our school district for all of our kids, because we have to put our kids first. Making sure that they have the tools that they need, sometimes it means that we need to provide parents with the tools and resources that they need to help them move their children forward. And I think that we must continue and not stop with progress. We want to make sure that our kids are not just learning some things or being pushed through, we want them to be brilliant in the basics. Thank you.
Am I good? Oh, sorry. Uh, so I, I think there's a few different levels of, um, communication. Uh, they were just talking about, um, uh, with the community, which I agree with 100%. I think, uh, one of the problems last year with the school closure process was that there was, um, not enough communication. was that there was not enough communication between the district and some of the schools affected. So I think there can be improvements there, for sure. And then communication between the teachers and the OPEC classified school employees. I think there's a lot of opportunity there to bring back a respectful, working relationship between the board and our teachers and classified employees. So I look forward to making that a big part of what we're doing on the board, too. Okay, thank you. Bob Kennedy?
I believe trust is built through consistent communication, consistent, transparent communication, and not just 500 robo-calls every week and parents don't know what to answer or if it's an emergency, but really having some community and parent forums where the information isn't just given to the community or to families, but they are able to help have a voice in it and help co-create some of the policies, particularly at the school level. I think it's unfortunate that parents don't get all the information, particularly around discipline, grades, that's happening at the building level, that the leadership can do a much better job in making sure that that information is transparent. And I think it starts there. And from the board perspective, we have to create the pathway and create the guardrails in order for that to happen. And so it's really trust in ensuring that families have a voice. I worked as a family ambassador, and part of that role was to reach out to families, to check in on them, to let them know what was going on in the district, how we can help navigate spaces. For example, a lot of parents don't even really understand how to access the early college and the Columbus Promise, right? There were so many kids who have an opportunity to engage in that, but because they can't navigate that system, they miss out.
Thank you. Ms. Keith?
Thank you so much. So as a parent, I think the importance is, should be stressed on parent forums where it gives the parents an opportunity to express themselves, to build those relationships with administration. And I also feel that the board meetings should be more accessible to the parents around our city. For instance, why would we not have a board meeting at a high school where the parents in that area can actually sit at the table and ask those questions? And so I feel like making the board more accessible to the parents across our city is definitely important, as well as the transparency, as well as making sure that we have forums where our parents, as well as our teachers, are able to have discussions with leadership so that their needs are met. There are too many times that our teachers are not empowered, and I feel this is, would be an opportunity to make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Okay, I will be asking the last five, Ms. Lumpkin, Mr. Lynch, Ms. Mason, Ms. Miranda, and Ms. Trabold. This question, community schools. In 2022, the teachers' union won a collaborative community schools model during the strike. The model is to help strengthen the relationship between our schools and our communities, making sure resources are more accessible and individualized for our neighborhood schools. Unfortunately, CCS has yet to discuss this model and share with the public that Northland High School is the pilot school for this model. What are your thoughts on the impact of a fully funded and resourced community schools model for CCS?
Actually, that is a good question. As far as that I'm concerned, one of the things that we need to do is always community. Schools, community with the teachers, community with anyone that works there at the school to help the kids. I think that would be a good success. That's one of the reasons why I'm running, is to make sure that we merge. There shouldn't be a discord between the board, between the teachers, between even the lunch lady. Everything should be community. Everything should be working together. I want to be a voice. I definitely want to be a part of the change that's going to be happening. And that's one of the reasons why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Munir Lynch. Thank you for this question. I agree that it's been a problem with the implementation of this. We need to have more accountability to making sure this proceeds in a timely manner. We need to understand where these are being implemented and that community-based schools should be done by design and should have a set framework rather than just being an experiment done by the district. We were held accountable to our teachers and our staff to make sure that this model is successfully implemented and planned. And when that is not being done, we do not see that result, right? And so continuous transparency, continuous accountability to our community as board members. And as a board member, hopefully, I will make sure that that is a priority for that body. So thank you for that question. And I would be excited to engage in furthering that plan and making sure that all of you are engaged in that process as well. Thank you, Munir Lynch.
No, thank you, Ms. Lynch.
You know, great question. It can definitely be a viable and valuable option. When you look at how we're going to support the whole child and what does the community need, community schools is a great resource. One great example of this is like Oakland International High School out in California. They have already kind of adopted this model that we are going to see here at Northland. So maybe the delay or pause could be, maybe they're trying to figure out their framework, right? And kind of saturate it to CCS, but if not, there's already a school that's thriving and what we would hope to kind of move forward in. Some of the other benefits of having a community school model also include making sure that when you look at the curriculum, how do you also bring everybody's well-being, background, best interests, and future goals into the process as well, too? So community schools is a great opportunity. There's already a model and framework that's available for us to tap in. And as a school board member, I would want to work with that school to making sure that that's something that we could bring forth and kind of roll out in phases, not only for Northland, but every other school that's also in the region as well, too. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you for that question. I think things like this often happens more than we know, that they fall off the agenda. And so it means that there has to be somebody that is responsible for making these things happen, and that is on the Columbus City School Board to work cooperatively with the school district and with CEA to make sure that happens. I think the opportunity for community schools is that it allows you to tailor things to that community. It allows you to bring community resources in from that community. There's, as she said, there's a lot of models around the country. And so I think there's opportunity for us to do that. More importantly, I think it helps build those schools up and helps build communities. One of the things that Columbus City has been missing for many years is community schools, especially at the high school level. We have it at the elementary level, we have it at the middle school level, but at the high school level, you can go anywhere in the city of Columbus. So this is an opportunity to build that community in a high school, to bring people back. And so part of that is about making sure that you are working with stakeholders, making sure you're working with teachers, and you also have to have strong leadership, as well as the Columbus City School Board, making this a priority and following through. That's probably one of the biggest issues, is follow-through. And that means somebody has to be responsible for it. Thank you.
No, thank you.
I agree with Miranda. So we have to keep our word with our promises. We have to have that communication. But part of the discomfort with our community and our parents and our teachers is that we aren't able to always follow through and haven't been, and we're operating in a financial deficit. So in order to make sure we can keep our word and not delay things from happening, we really have to make sure that we unfold and have a sustainable financial operating system. And so that's part of my plan with bringing in investors and making sure that we can bring in creative sources of revenue to also invest and grow our funds and have emergency funds and be able to get our word done and follow through with our promises timely.
Thank you. For our next question, we will go for a question submitted from one of our community members. And we'll start this with Ms. Hannah and continue through Ms. Lumpkin. So this question, also near and dear to my heart as an English teacher and literacy person. How will you respond to requests to ban certain books? And we'll start again with Ms. Hannah.
I think it would depend upon who it comes from. No, I'm just playing. I think that it is important that we make sure that we are following the guidelines for the schools. And sometimes that means that we have to follow what the laws are, even though they may change. I think it's important that we continue and make sure that we provide resources and the tools that our kids need, and that includes reading literature, giving them the opportunity to also go into the community and to work with them to many times get the resources and things that we need to be successful, that we don't have access to. Thank you.
I would be strongly against banning just about all books, and I think there'd have to be a very strong reason why we would ban any book, so against.
Yeah, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't agree with banning any books. I believe the diversity of the district, culturally relevant materials, literature, experiences is what our students need, is what our students want. It's their right as students. And so I believe that no book necessarily should be banned, and we should expose our kids and our young people to as much as possible. Culture, be that through culture, be that through just real-world, relevant literature, is what our young people need to be exposed to.
Thank you for that question, and I do not believe in banning books either. I do, but I do believe in making sure that books are adequate for ages. I feel like we do our community an injustice when we sell ourselves down the stream of we don't want to necessarily expose our children to certain things. We need to make sure that they are exposed to cultural, relevant material. And so I would not ban a book based on certain criteria. But I do feel, again, that books should be made available to children based off of specific ages.
For me, I am absolutely, it would be hard for me to answer this question without seeing the book. For me, I have to make sure that the book is age-appropriate for the children. There's all kinds of books that are out there. So just a general session, as far as I would want to make sure that all books are age-appropriate and appropriate for the kids. It's all about them learning and reading. I don't want to be responsible for inappropriate books for the kids.
And this next question is for Mr. Lynch, Ms. Mason, Ms. Miranda, Ms. Trabold, and Ms. Turner. What will you do to improve the lives of people in the CCS schools? And this is a CCS student.
He said, what would you do to improve the?
The lives of the students that go to CCS, and this is from a student themselves, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that question, to that brave student that asked that. I appreciate that. First and foremost, we need to make sure that every school has an equal opportunity to succeed, right? That means that all of your teachers have all the supplies that they need to teach you, right? We should be able to provide those things to our teachers. We should make sure that you have a place to go when things are going rough in your personal life and you need someone to speak to. We don't have enough of those people in our school district. So I appreciate you asking about that as well. We need to make sure that there are plenty of opportunities for our students to engage in the arts. I was in music, I was in theater, I was briefly in sports before we found out I was too short to continue doing sports, but plenty of opportunities for that as well. And just making sure that you have all the tools that you need as one of our students to really feel safe in our school as well. And you need to have a board that recognizes who you are as an individual and make sure that we protect you for who you are, whether it is related to gender identity or who you love, who you like, right? Whether it's you speak another language. All of these things are things that I honor and respect, and I honor and respect all of these varying identities. And I promise to be a protector of all of your friends. So thank you. Thank you for asking that question.
No, thank you, Ms. Lynch.
Can you repeat the question, please?
The question is, how will you improve the life of a Columbus City school student?
Great question. So twofold. One, understanding self-sufficiency, and what does that look like? And that looks completely different from each side of town, to each level of family's background. So understanding what does it look like from the outcome of what do we want to model? How do I want my child to be successful? Do I want them to be successful that they're just reading and they're going to go to college? Do I want them to be successful that my child has special needs and they want to make sure they have a job and career? What does self-sufficiency look like? Now, I can tell you on a micro level what that looks like as a former PTO president, had the opportunity of supporting at my child's school from 2016 through COVID. So fun years. But I say all that to say, what we had to do was meet people where they're at. That's the first part to understanding self-sufficiency and understanding what the whole child needs are. From there, kind of creating pathways, plans of success that families and children can also be able to kind of wrap around, take in their part, and also be able to make sure that they're achieving those goals that are set forth in that space. So when it comes to a CCS student, what we have to find out and identify is, what is success in CCS? What does it look like as far as the students? What does it look like when we look at it from an umbrella perspective? And I mean that from whether if you're at Walnut Ridge, or to your friends that's at West High School, to your friends that's over at Northland or Centennial, essentially. What does that look like? How are we going to make everyone successful under CCS so that all the students have the same opportunities, unfold new opportunities, and more importantly, are able to increase and leverage what they have learned?
Thank you, Ms. Mason.
I think one of the most important things, regardless of whether you're in elementary, middle, or high school, is that the school has a positive culture and climate, that there is a sense of belonging. And that comes from the leadership at the top, meaning the principal, and goes all the way down to the teachers. The teachers have to show that they want to be in the school. And so as a result of that, we have to make sure that there are resources in the school, there are opportunities for students that have different interests, and that we involve the community and, most importantly, the parents. I think that, I think there are schools that do a very good job of that. And when you see that the culture and climate is positive, when you see that there is a sense of belonging, when you see that the students' basic needs are met, then they are achieving academically, then the behavior is on point. And so you have to have that foundation in the schools, always asking. I think the other thing that we don't do enough of is to ask the students what they want. Not the brightest students in the school, but we also need to ask those kids that some may have behavior problems, because sometimes we'll find that their answer is very different, but it leads us to thinking about how we can make change in the school. So we have to also hear the student voice, and there's many, many opportunities to do that.
Thank you for this question. What I will do for the students is to make sure that you feel safe when you come in the doors, that you feel comfortable and you can leave all of your anxieties at the door, that you will feel comfortable, that you will have air conditioning and good, clean water and healthy air, and that you will have access to all of the sports equipment, swimming pools, whatever desires your heart has for sports and academics, that we will have the resources to fund that. I will make sure that we really focus in on our anti-bullying policies and really make sure that students are aware of what the expectations are for behaviors and classroom expectations and academic performance.
Thank you, Ms. Trabold.
So the question was, what will I do to ensure that Columbus City School students will thrive? Since, paraphrasing, right?
Yeah.
So I will work to ensure things. I said I will work to ensure three things that the mic cut out. Three things. Don't mind the nail. I broke the nail when I was coming in this evening. I was rushing to get here. So three things. First, that every student and every teacher in Columbus City Schools feels safe and a sense of belonging into their school buildings. So echoing what everyone else has said, feeling a sense of having their necessities. even beyond, you know, having a clear rush to use and having the resources to thrive, but as well as the curriculum that is inclusive, that has a sense of self that can guide them to academic success. Number three, opportunity, a chance to learn in these new building trades that are now emerging throughout our state. Equip our kids with credentials so they're able to pursue these new opportunities that are coming into our backyard, ensuring opportunity. Number three, a sense of community, a sense of partnerships with our local organizations and unions, a sense of engagement, a sense of collaboration and transparency. These three things equate to the perfect recipe for success of a number one, potential number one urban leading school, which Columbus City Schools is. So a sense of safe belonging, opportunity, and community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another question submitted from our audience. We'll start this one with Mr. Katzenmeyer and go through Mr. Lynch. How will you work to change the board's perceived dysfunction? Let that settle for a little bit, then go ahead.
Did you want to start, she got skipped in the last?
Do you want to start?
We're alternating start, I think.
Sorry about that. So how would I help the board's perceived dysfunction? I think there are, I think there are some good school board members currently on the board. And with three new people that are sitting up here tonight, I think we will be able to kind of instantly in November create a common sense majority on the board of stable, pragmatic leadership that we can, we'll be able to communicate with parents, we'll be able to communicate with teachers, classified school employees. And I sense that from these people that I'm sitting up here with that I've gotten to really like over the last few weeks. And I think there are some good board members on the board. So I don't want to sit up here and trash the board. But we did go, you know, we did go through this problem, through the closure process personally. So I have seen it upfront, and it involves, involves respect for the school employees, involves respect for the parents, and really some respect for your fellow board members, which I think unfortunately, that's also been a problem on the board. So I want to find the board members that are there that we would work closely with, work closely with a couple of our other colleagues up here. And I think there's definitely a path to turn this board around very quickly in November. Thank you.
As part of my, as part of my leadership, I believe my underlying goal is, how do we collaborate in the presence of difference, right? And the way we do that is, there's no permanent friends, there's no permanent enemies, there's only permanent interests. And so if we focus our interest on how we can ensure that this district is moving forward, our kids are thriving, our teachers have the resources they need, that's the focus. Anything other than that is just ego, right? And so the goal is to focus on the permanent interest of why we all are here, why the school district exists, and that's to ensure that our kids can know what they need to know and be able to do what they need to do to move forward in a society. Thank you.
Thank you for this question. At the beginning of the day and at the end of the day, it is all about our children. We have to, as Dr. Kennedy said, leave our egos at the door. I believe every one of the school board members gets an opportunity to sit at the table and express themselves. And I personally have to say, it's my idea to do this, but if it's not the will of the whole entire board, it doesn't get done. But then I lace up my boots and I say, whatever that idea was that this individual had or the collective, the idea, it's my responsibility to make sure it gets executed. So again, leaving our egos at the door is so vital to our children as well as making sure that everyone does get an opportunity to express themselves. No one wants to be without being heard. So I believe that all 10 of these candidates, just getting to know them, want what's best for our students. I believe them sitting in the room allows individuals to say, no, these individuals are secure in who they are and they mean business in regards to taking care of our youth. Our children need to be taken care of. They need to get the education they need, they need to be able to be successful in their lives. And that requires a board that is listening to their needs, not their own.
Excuse me, I have to stand up for this. There was times when I had to go out and get people to sign my petition. And the biggest thing I heard from the community, why do you want to be on the board right now? So let me tell you why in my voice. I am actually called out to do this by God. He has called me out, there is so much more into me. I have retired to do this. I'm not a political person, I'm a young lady that believes in the kids' education. My work with all the other board members, and when you put me on the board, I will take that seriously. I will not discuss board issues in front of the camera. There may be times where, you know, we may not all get along, but you will never know that. I will work behind anybody's ideal. I'm a worker, I'm one that looks at it as a team. I fit better with a team, I worked with teams all my life, and I help people come together with their ideals. So your ideal, my ideal, let's get it done. Because at the end of the day, when we turn Columbus City schools around, it will actually be for a good thing and all of us will get credit for that. Not fighting, not disagreeing, we will all get the credit of turning the school around. So I most definitely had to stand for that. Thank you for whoever asked that question.
Thank you for the question. Yes, that's also a big one that I get when I'm knocking doors and talking to people is, why would you want to do this right now with all that going on? And my answer to that is, we have an election. We have an election that will have consequences as to whether we move forward with this or not. And we need to elect people that are ready to work and to build that coalition day one because we serve a greater purpose than our personal issues and quarreling with one another. We have an emergency on our hands. I frankly do not have the time to insert myself into personal issues that exist. My mission is to the staff and students of Columbus City Schools and the district that I so proudly grew up in and was raised by, and it is a higher purpose than this. We do not have time. And so I hope to be a candidate that is fully transparent and accountable to the community that I would trust with my vote. And we just do not have the time. I'm not willing to participate or engage in that, I'm willing to be here to work for you. And we will have three new board members regardless. There are no incumbents coming back, it's going to be a new body no matter what. And we have some great people out here, but we really need someone who's ready to get to work day one. Thank you, Munir Lynch.
Will be asked to Ms. Mason, Ms. Miranda, Ms. Trebel, Ms. Turner, and Ms. Hannah. And it's about LGBTQ. How do you plan to ensure a safe, inclusive, and supportive learning environment for LGBTQ students, given state law recently passed by the Ohio Legislature? And how will you support trans students as a school board member? And this was one from a CCS student.
Great question, and thank you for asking that. Obviously, you know, beginning of this year, from the conversations of DEI attack and then just other different groups in marginalized communities being attacked. Unfortunately, we live in a system and a society that there's always been attacks to individuals that individuals perceive as threats. And we know at the end of the day, nobody's ever really a threat to anybody else, right? It's about how you show up and treat one another. I definitely think when it comes down to our students at CCS, I'm focused on making sure that we have an environment that inclusivity is across the board, not just from when you come in the door, but also when it comes to your curriculum, when it comes to what your outcome may be as well, too. I think it's important that we do better education, not only just internally from the community standpoint of understanding the population that we serve, but I also think when it comes to our teachers too, professional development, to understand either one of two things. You know, how do you support students that you may or may not be familiar with because you come from a different background, a different upbringing, a different socioeconomic status? Or once again, you may just come from outside of the city, so you're not familiar with students that are part of CCS. Outside of that as well, too, I think being able to maybe have better working relationships with our NGOs, so our, our community partners, our non-government agency bodies, and being able to maybe work with them so that we have better working relationships. So when it comes to our students from LGBTQ, oh, stop, okay.
I would say the first thing, because this recently happened, is that we cannot jump ahead of the law. And one of the things that happened is that, as everybody knows, they changed the names without informing the parents. But what's more important to know, there was nothing in the law that said you had to put their name back to what they call their birth name. That was not in the law. And so trying to understand what happened with that communication is extremely important. So with all of this stuff, many times, we are jumping ahead to try to comply with the law when there are things not in the law that we are doing. It is important to be inclusive. I was on the State Board of Education when they had an awful resolution. I fought against that resolution with fellow board members. I heard the testimony of transgender students, the heartbreaking testimony of transgender students. And it's more important than ever to have inclusivity, not only of transgender students, but of all students. Transgender students have the highest suicide rate, and we have to make sure that teachers know how to be inclusive. We have to make sure leaders want to be, need to be inclusive. Because when you are not inclusive with one group, which group is next? And so we have to look at, how do we have inclusive practices? And make sure that we don't let the law, we go overboard from the law because sometimes there are not things in there, such as what happened recently in Columbus City Schools.
Thank you.
It feels like we keep taking steps forward and steps back and steps forward and steps back when it comes to DEI. But we will get there. We will get there one day. We will keep fighting for everyone's rights to have a voice, to have respect, to have their dignity acknowledged at all times. But what I will do is to make sure that we are giving voice to everyone and that we are having student ambassadors and that our teachers are adequately trained, our staff is adequately trained to be inclusive and to advocate for our kids, no matter LGBTQ plus or what their differences are. I know that it is very brave to really find your identity and to be vocal about it, who you are. It took me into my twenties to really even understand who I was and to grasp my identity. So, you know, anytime we have any of our youth, no matter the age, really acknowledging who they are and speaking out, it is something to celebrate, it is something to be very proud of and to empower them and hold them up with that voice. And that's what I will be doing.
Thank you.
As we know, public education is under attack, and so are our students. Our students do not feel safe. Many of our students identify with various communities that are under attack. I believe in equipping our teachers with the knowledge and the skills to be able to speak up for their students and also support their voices not being heard. Years ago, I've undergone training with the Kaleidoscope Youth Center and advocated for training for educators in my school building. I've been that advocate with many of my students who struggle with gender identity and sexuality and actually having those conversations with parents and community organizations to provide them with resources. I've been and been a part of those hard conversations. I'm happy and I'm excited to go and champion more inclusion for our students. I believe that with effective communication and honest communication and building parameters within our school that allows our students and our staff to feel safe is of the most priority. I am honored to have the support of the Stonewall Democrats and all of our local organizations to continue championing this work, to ensuring that our schools are safe havens and the students feel safe. My name is Liz Caslin Turner, and I am your community and your school board advocate for those marginalized communities. I will continue to champion the work with your support, to make sure that we all feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you. One of the things that I think that is important is that we must all educate ourselves. That means the, all of the administration, the board members, not just saying our teachers need to be educated. I recently went to the library to an event that they had, and the Stonewall Columbus was there. I needed to educate myself. So I would be able to know how to better to respond to situations regarding our trans students or LGBTQ. I needed to start with me first and then to lead by example. And when I'm talking to people, I want to make sure that all of our kids are safe when they go to school, not just feel safe, but to be safe. And we have to make sure that we are addressing those policies and making sure that we are passing the information along to make sure that it's implemented and followed. So I think that when we do that, we can also make sure that we can continue for our students to learn, earn, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, our next question submitted from a community member. We'll go start with Dr. Kennedy and go through Ms. Mason. One looming challenge over the last several years is transportation. Not enough drivers and the pay isn't competitive. How do you plan to address this given current budget constraints? And I think we're talking about bus drivers.
That's a very, very, very important question right now in this landscape that we're in. And unfortunately, right, the district only has so much money, right? It only has so many resources. And so I think it's, will be imperative for us to find ways to leverage some of the partnerships with other organizations that can help supplement and support what our transportation looks like. But more importantly, though, on a long-term scale, I think we may have to revisit what neighborhood schools look like, right? And not having kids go from the south side of town to the north side of town for school, right? Based off of a lottery program. I think it may be more resourceful to start resourcing our neighborhood schools so parents want to send their kids to the high school, to the school that's in their neighborhood where they won't have to travel across the city. That's one of the most financial, resourceful and just responsible ways to leverage the funds that we have that we, that obviously, from the state level, federal level, is under attack. And we're not going to, it's unfair to come back to you with another levy, particularly for our seniors who are on fixed income, to have to pay even more, right? And so as a district, we need to look at how we are, how are we logistically ensuring that the schools work well to support all the kids in all neighborhoods?
Thank you.
So thank you, great question. I want to start off with saying, I'm not sure if you all know, but with the vouchers, we are also responsible for transporting students to these charter schools. I think that that is a dis, is a disservice to our students who are needing to be bused to their schools. So my thought would be to make sure that our funds go to our children to get them to and from their school locations. And so the other piece to that is making sure that our budget is not top-heavy. You know, we are not, we are making sure that we do not have top-heavy pay and that we are actually putting funds towards the benefit of our children, which means transporting them, getting them to where they need to be. But most importantly, we need to make sure that the funding that we are giving, that we have been given, is actually going to the children that are in our district and transporting them back and forth to the schools that are within the district versus charter schools. Thank you.
That is too, excellent, excellent question.
That is too, excellent, excellent question. As I've been out in the community, I've actually talked to bus drivers. And the biggest thing that they have is the charter schools. I know when I had to go to school, I walked. So I think we need to go back to the table and sit and redirect of where these kids are being bused. Sometimes there's schools right in their backyard and they're being bused to a charter school. I think we need to find a way to redirect that where we can have the charter school help out. We need to partnership. There is no way that, our first priority should be Columbus City Schools. And that is a big thing for me, in the simple fact of why should, a lot of parents were telling me they're waiting thirty, forty minutes for their kid to come home, and they don't know why. Or the bus just didn't show. And a lot of times, that's from the lack of communication and that's sad. Nobody wants their baby out in the street thirty or forty minutes waiting on the bus to go to school to start to learn. So a big thing we have to do, we have to redirect that. We have to sit back at the table and we have to find out what we can do. One of the things I don't want us to do is I want us to take Columbus City School as high priority for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this question. While I do acknowledge the reality that we are obligated to provide that transportation to the charter schools, I do have a problem with that. But that is currently the, the reality that we're dealing with. And so we have to, in the meantime, champion our school district in the State House everywhere we go. Those are the barriers that we are fighting against. I want every Columbus City School Board member to spend as much time in the State House as many of y'all that I know in this room do. And so that's step one. Step two is if we are dealing with this transportation system, we need to have a more sophisticated way of letting our parents and families know where is their kid at, at what given time. We have the ability to use or create technology that keeps them more up-to-date and more knowledgeable about what is going on and at what time. And over the years, and since I was a CCS student, the solution has been, well, let's just give them a code of pass, let's make their ID a code of pass. And that's great, but we don't have that robust of a public transit system either. And so we need to help improve that as well. But the kids don't want that. They want a bus that's going to be able to take them back to their neighborhood, that's provided by our district. And as board members, we have the obligation to make sure that everything that we provide as a district is accessible to them, that transportation is included. Thank you, Munir Lynch.
Great question, and as you've mentioned, some of the colleagues talk about, you know, old-school ways of you walk to school to rethinking as far as where transportation may or may not go. I know at the beginning of this year, I received a letter that said I was fifteen minutes away from my son's school, so I had to take him to and from. I probably have done that every day this year. Now, I also understand that that's maybe a privilege that I have that some of the other parents may not have. So while we're looking at other different creative solutions as far as what parents can take students for transportation, what parents and what kids can walk in to and from, that is a safe neighborhoods to walking, because not every neighborhood has sidewalks, so understanding that as well too. But more importantly, looking at other creative solutions that if it takes about nine thousand dollars to educate a student, what percentage of that is actually can be held back towards the bus systems? And how much does it cost for our daily buses to run? So that we can make sure that we have the proper infrastructure there and that we have the actual fiscal budget and not maybe all the money that's being allocated or moving with the child is going there, so that's staying back in the district. Another thing is too, there's also the Safe Green Schools Resolution. So that's an opportunity to make our buses a little bit more eco-friendly. And as we move forward as future board members, that's an opportunity to make sure that we have bus systems that will be carbon-reduced, will be a little bit more efficient. And once again, also may help aid and provide better transportation solutions for our students too.
Thank you. This next question will be from Ms. Miranda, Ms. Treble, Ms. Turner, Ms. Hannah, and Mr. Katzenmeyer. "As we should be aware, students learn in different ways. If learning styles assessments are not currently used, what tools should be implemented to account for, for different learning styles?"
So part of the issue is that, for example, we now have science of reading, which is very scripted. And so we do have some curriculum that doesn't allow for the different learning styles. So as a school psychologist, one of the things I know that children learn differently. And so it's really about teachers understanding about differentiated learning and that they're able to assess how their students learn. Oftentimes, teachers teach the way they learn. And so they have to understand that there are different ways that, that students learn. And so part of that is really teachers working cooperatively with each other, being aware of what are some different ways that they can bring things outside of the classroom into the classroom. So it's really, to me, it's about the teachers understanding differentiated learning, but also recognizing that not every kid learns the same. And we have to be willing to think outside of the box. But I will say that some of the things that are coming down, I'll just say from the legislators, are really forcing schools to do a lot of scripted things. And one of the things I always say, that every kid learns differently, there is not one way. So part of it is fighting back the legislators in terms of what they're requiring us to do in the classroom. And so thinking about how do we do that, but how do we get a way around that? Because I think it's also important, just because a kid learns differently does not mean they're special ed. And so we have to understand that kids have different ways of learning and how are we going to accommodate that?
Thank you so much.
So metrics are important, but nobody likes to be micromanaged. And teachers don't like that, students don't like that. So some, some of the standardized testing is a little bit excessive and it's a little bit much for the teachers to be constantly worried about meeting certain metrics. So I believe getting a little bit more flexible with that and giving them a little bit more space and liberty to teach their students, because at the end of the day, all of our teachers went into teaching for a reason, and it's their passion. And they're all trying to teach their students. So letting them focus on the heart of what they're doing and not worrying and stressing about meeting metrics and cramming information into kids is important. But what brought me and my family into this district was for a specialized school. It was for Columbus Gifted Academy. And I've worked closely with OAGC, Ohio Association for Gifted Children. And something that they like to highlight is that on both ends of the educational bell curve, trying to draw a bell curve, there are special needs. And so our gifted learners have special needs as well. They learn differently, they socialize differently, they operate differently. It wasn't until my daughter went to CGA that she finally made friends. She was bullied for several years. So I think it is really important to differentiate that there are groups of children who have different learning styles and needs that oftentimes we don't think about. So it is important. Julie Treble.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. I'm really excited about this question. Because have you guys heard Senate Bill 44? Which is directly impacting the students who learn differently. It's stripping our local some public schools of resources to teachers who provide special curriculum for students who are considered diverse learners. So as a diverse learner myself, who is dyslexic, to have the firsthand experience of navigating with my IEP, I've also had the experience as an educator, having these conversations with parents and navigating them through the documentation, which we know is a lie as an educator, as we're documenting to, I guess, to really equip the student with the proper success. So I believe that to really address this issue, we need resources, we need proper curriculum, and we also need to fight back legislation echoing what Dr. Miranda said. Because we have these things coming down the pipeline, it's going to make it more difficult for our students to learn and to be successful. So I believe we have to advocate, we have to advocate for the resources, we have to advocate for these communications. And we need to also know and equip our teachers. So professional development, resources, and curriculum is going to be most important. As legislation comes down, it's going to make it even more challenging. This is a really important issue to me, and I hope to continue this work and share my experiences and the boots-on-the-ground work that I've had with community partners to make sure that curriculum and teachers have the equipment they need to ensure equity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I had actually experienced a family member who had an IEP. But what I did was I really built a relationship with some of the teachers to actually figure out a plan that would work to help the child be academically successful, but also to give him or her the encouragement that they needed to thrive. And so a lot of times, I feel that when we know that there is more than one way to learn, we just have to work with the professionals who can many times tell us, which a lot of times are the teachers. And then we also have to be creative and find other resources that will help us get over that hump to success. And so I would like to say that I do appreciate the teachers and building the relationships that I have to help my family member get over that hump and accomplish no longer being on an IEP.
I think though... I think those are all a lot of good answers. Teresa, Liz, Julie, and Dr. Miranda, it all have personal experiences with that. We, my nephew is on an IEP. I think we, I think we live in, in a time where there is more research than ever on this and also at a time when people are trying to spin research to say different things. And it's incumbent upon us as, as board members to, to do our homework and listen to the experts and understand the best ways to professionally develop our teachers. So I, I think that's, I forget what exactly the question was, but I think we, we just need to all, you know, dig in on this and, and be paying attention. And yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Another audience submitted question, we have a lot of those, so we're going to kind of give the audience the voice. We're going to start this with Ms. Keys and go through Dr. Miranda. "CCS continues to invest in expanding administration in the central office. Do you agree that more administration is the solution to improving Columbus City Schools?"
So as I stated earlier, we need to make sure that our budget is not top-heavy. I do believe that there are positions that are required. However, we need to make sure that our students are getting the things that they need met. It's almost like we should do a reverse, like are our students getting their needs met? And then go to the administration piece. There are required administration roles, definitely. But we need to make sure that we are not top-heavy and that we are actually thinking about the advancement of our children. There are so many more opportunities for our children that a job literally could, could compensate. So we need to make sure that we are not top-heavy.
Do you mind reading that question again?
Yes. "CCS continues to invest in expanding administration in the central office. Do you agree that more administration is the solution to improving Columbus City Schools?"
Yes, okay. Yes, I agree, but one of the things about it is to make sure that all of, everybody's need is being met. I don't think it stops at the board. I don't think it's, it helps with the teachers, lunch lady, with the janitor even. Kids have to have clean schools with the transportation. So I do believe that everybody should have a voice and a seat at the table to make sure that it stays and can remain very successful. Just because we are on the board doesn't mean that that's all we do. I think it's very important for board members to actually go out and see the needs of the school to make sure that it's being met. Make sure the teachers are being met and all the needs that they have for the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you for this question. This is a very complex issue, but first and foremost, like, we need to define the fact that the superintendent does have a lot of the decision-making that is involved with administration. And so the board needs to very closely collaborate on that and what our priorities are. My priority is the staff that contact the students every single day, the ones that are shaping our students' lives every day. And the fact that every year, I make a small donation to a group of teachers' Amazon wish lists when our tax dollars should be covering those things, right? And so that's not something I'm comfortable with. What I'm also not comfortable with is while we deal with the administrative issue as well, we also need to make sure that we're not paying tens of thousands of dollars for people from out of state to come and make a PowerPoint about what the problems are in our community that we clearly understand. That to me is a huge issue on top of the administrative bloat that we experience. There are administrators that do great things to help define the learning of our students, but we really, really have to comprehensively look at each and every single one of those roles and what resource can go back into the classroom or on the building. Thank you.
Train well. You know, I felt like my grandmother would say, too many chiefs, not enough Indians. So essentially, when we look at it, every side of town is different, okay? And I don't know what the performance evaluations look like when the superintendent goes to review who gets to say what, who gets to stay where. As a board member, that's something that I would like to look into and investigate because at the end of the day, maybe if I look on the west side of town and if there's seven administrators there, the problems that's on the west side may be a little bit different and vast, that it might require seven different administrators. Versus if I go to Northland area, it may only require three. So in that same sense, how do we start to shift people to the roles that are actually needed and available for CCS? Because while there's a lot of roles that are important for CCS, there's a lot of roles that are unfulfilled in CCS. And that within itself is creating some of the gap that we see from making sure that the students are successful, the building administration is successful, and the teachers are getting the resources that they need in a timely manner. So I would definitely like to have a reframe and relook to see exactly who's where, what's important, what's needed, what's valued. And then from there, being able to have the assessments of, okay. So now when we look at the last few years, how has the building been working? How has the region been working? How have you been growing academically? And from there, as any other sector would say, if you're performing well, right? You'll maintain the employment. And if you're not, then you have to look at those skills and adjust accordingly as well too.
Given the potential looming... Given the potential looming budget shortfall, if the legislators have their way and short-change many of the public schools because they want to fund private schools and with vouchers and because they want to fund football stadiums, this may be a huge issue for us where we do have to look at the administration. Where the administration is most important to me is in the schools. It is most important to have principals and assistant principals. And so what we may want to do is really do some data, looking at some data to look at how has top administration grown over the last five years? And if it has grown, we should be looking at what is the effectiveness of that. So if they've started a department, you talked about Northland. If there's somebody in charge of that, but Northland hasn't started, then maybe that position isn't needed. So I think we have to look at what has happened over the last five years in terms of administration. If it's increased, we also then need to look at what are they being effective? Because that's the thing, if you're going to have top administrators pay them top dollar, they should be making a difference in these different areas where they're doing that. But to me, the most important administrators are in the schools where the resources are needed.
So this...
Yeah.
So this question will be for Ms. Treble, Ms. Turner, Ms. Hannah, Mr. Katzenmeyer, and Mr. Kennedy. "How can you assist CCS resources with the budget cuts from the state?"
So looking at the amount of funds that we currently get from our state government and from our federal government, it is maybe less than a fifth of our, of our overall funds. Less than two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, two hundred million dollars a year out of about nine hundred and fifty million. So at the end of the day, most of our funds are coming from taxpayer dollars. So I want you to have hope that if they fall short, and they're planning on falling short, that we are still going to survive. But I really do believe that we have to bring in investors. Our funding is changing and we can't keep relying on the state and federal funding to fall short. We can't keep, I mean, we've been doing this for decades now. And even fifteen years ago, Columbus City Schools was almost needing to be taken over by the federal government. We survived, and we're going to keep surviving. But we really, really have to get a sustainable... We survived, and we're going to keep surviving, but we really, really have to get a sustainable financial operating system and have a surplus, an emergency fund that we're able to invest in an index fund in the least to grow at 8% to have excess finances and not deficits. Thank you. Julie Trebel.
Thank you.
With the recent budget cuts that are affecting resources in many of our public schools, I think two initial things to really look into is diversifying funding. So, looking in different ways to generate funding for our schools and for our teachers. One method, one pathway is into tactical education. I have expanded over 500 technical education programs in the state of Ohio and assisted in developing apprenticeships and externships for students and providing them with that technical education and supplying teachers with those credentials that not only increase their funding, but also educate our teachers. A second way to address these recent budget cuts is reallocating resources. As you heard tonight, a lot of our schools are lacking certain resources, which is now creating families having to travel across the city to secure a certain, I would say, curriculum or resource for their child. So, I would say diversifying funding, make sure that we are actually getting access to state and federal dollars that could be generated back into not only our schools, but our neighborhoods. And then, also reallocating resources so every school has the resources to serve their community and their students. My name is Liz Caslin Turner. I have the expertise to do this work, and I have been doing this work. And I ask you for your vote on May 6th. Let's do this.
Thank you.
I agree with what everyone on the panel has said, but one thing I'd like to add on that is that we need to advocate for smarter budgeting that will directly benefit our students, and that is one thing I'd like to add to that.
Yeah, I think we need to never stop advocating at the state level, and we need to keep pushing there. I think the superintendent is doing a pretty good job with this. We have, you know, families and her, they're currently testifying in front of the House and Senate committees. We also need to recognize that the state isn't coming to our aid in that well, and they're not listening to us, us being, you know, big city school districts. So, I think we also need to bring in, you know, people that Republicans listen to, which are business folks, and bring them in. And they, I think they're ready to, you know, be partnering again with the school districts. We were just at a lunch the other day that talked about how much the business community is putting in for the Columbus Promise, which lets graduates of Columbus Public Schools go to Columbus State for free. So, the business community is there. We need to get them pushing in the State House for us and really get them helping us there. So, then, also in agreement with everything everyone else said, but would add that, too.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with a lot of, what has been shared. I also would add, we just need to first have full implementation of the Fair School Funding Plan. Second, we really need to revisit and reevaluate how these tax abatements are siphoning money from our, from the district and really look at these developers, right? Those funds should be going back into the district. And I think, third, it is time to expand partnerships, partnerships with nonprofits, partnerships with the philanthropic community, business community, and find ways to leverage resources so we can effectively meet the needs of our young people.
Thank you.
I believe we have one final question before we transition. Yes? Cool. All right, so, last official question, and then we'll kind of transition to our closing statements. There's a lot of audience questions we didn't get to. I just want to remind everyone that I think all the candidates have websites that you can visit and post questions to as well. So, if we didn't get to your question, we apologize, but please send them directly to the candidates. So, had to choose from a lot of questions, so I chose this one. Currently, the district is experiencing a teacher shortage, particularly in science, math, and special education. What ideas do you have for retaining quality educators and recruiting new teachers? And we will start with Ms. Lumpkin and go through Ms. Trebel.
That is such an excellent question. Actually, I've been doing my homework, and I talked to a former teacher that went to Columbus City Schools. And she was saying to me that the biggest problem is she didn't feel supported. She actually teach, at the time, she was teaching, I'm sorry, I drew a blank, she was actually teaching disability and for special kids, special, and she said that it was so hard to get the needs met for the kids. It was hard for her to even, a lot of times, she had to buy the supplies, a lot of times. The parents wouldn't, they were supportive, but not enough for her to be successful. So, she ended up leaving. So, the reason why that I had lunch with her is because I'm going to be a voice for the community. I want to be a voice for teachers. I want to be a voice for everyone. Not everybody can take off work and come to a board meeting. Not everybody has time after school to come to a board meeting. So, I want to get to the great problem, and the great problem is I believe our teachers are leaving because they're not feeling supportive. They're not feeling that no one is listening to them. So, Carrie Lumpkin, please vote for me. I can't do this alone. I need each and every one of you to vote. Carrie Lumpkin, thank you.
Can you all repeat the question verbatim? I'm sorry. Sorry, Dr. Jones.
It's okay.
I didn't do this to him in high school, I promise.
I know what you're doing.
Maybe.
He's getting me back. I wasn't paying attention. Currently, the district is experiencing a teacher shortage, particularly in science, math, and special education. So, what ideas do you have for retaining quality educators and recruiting new teachers?
Yes, thank you. We do have a lot of quality educators in the Columbus City School District, and we need to fight to keep them here. The central point of my campaign is I want to make our district, Columbus City Schools, the best place to work and learn, and that means that we are incentivizing people to come here and making sure that they stay. And yes, we are all going to say that we will support our teachers and we want to support our teachers, but we also need to make this a place where they feel like they can belong and that this is the place that they want to go. This means that we need our teachers to have a building that is safe for them to be teaching in. We need to make sure that they have all of the resources to effectively communicate with their students who don't speak the same language as them. We need to make sure that they have a district that supports them in handling the barriers to even teaching their students. I'm of the age where a lot of my friends are coming out of their master's degrees, PhD programs and figuring out, where do I want to go to be a teacher after getting my license? And none of them have told me Columbus City Schools. And I'm like, really? Come on. Like, I love CCS. And they're like, their answer is no, I don't want to come here. And that, to me, is shameful. I'm so proud of CCS, and I'm proud of all the teachers that helped raise me. And so, we need to make sure that we are from every place, buildings, curriculum, we are making sure that this is the best place for them to go. Thank you.
There's a couple of things that come to mind. So, you know, while school closures is not an ideal topic, I also feel like it's a chance to kind of double down and go through a reframing and reworking to see what are the resources that we need to bring to our teachers, to our classified staff, and to the parents to making sure that when it comes to retention and attracting qualified individuals, we are in all facets of that. We know that when somebody is not happy in a workplace, it's normally work-life balance, it's normally pay, or it's normally the culture and climate. So, how is it that as CCS are we showing up that we're creating a culture and climate that is different from every other district? How are we making sure that we're offering pay that is also different from every other district? And how are we making sure from a work-life balance that we're honoring that for all of the individuals that meet a student once they come through the door? Last but not least, I want to look at training and development. What happens for a lot of our CCS students, the teachers that come that want to be inspired, whether it's from the collegiate space, there's no training and development. There is no internships that's going to kind of bring them in and kind of give them a full saturated experience to say, this is what life looks and feels like when you're going to be a teacher. CCS is a moving target, so we have to make sure we have training and development that also pairs with that when we're also bringing in individuals to the district, not only from what are, what are our challenges, what are our needs, the cultural competency, the resources that we do have, and what does it look like as far as a final outcome? So, my goal would be when it comes to attracting and retaining individuals is looking at our culture and climate, looking at our training and development, and looking at how do we make sure that this is the ideal workplace for all.
Thank you for this question. This is particularly important to me as Director of Teacher Education, as Chair of the Department. Because we are dealing with this, there's a couple of things. One, people going into teaching today are not like the people 20 years ago, where you stayed there for 35 years and retired. And so, we have to look differently about who we're going to attract. Some of the best teachers right now are teachers that are in their second career. And so, the university has to change in terms of how they do things. One of the things we've been looking at is instructional aides, particularly instructional aides have a lot of minorities. We know that we are lacking in minority teachers, and so, we have to be nimble as universities to be able to allow instructional aides to come back and get their teaching degree while they are working. And so, we're looking at these different models because those who are going into teaching are very different, they're second careers, there are instructional aides that are there. And so, partnering, one of the things we've looked at is Columbus City Schools partnering, for example, with Ohio State University, seeing how we can put programs in place so that people that are in the schools that may be instructional aides can actually come back and get their degree and come into Columbus City Schools. They've already been there 10 years, so why not go get a teaching degree and make three times what you're making as an instructional aide? So, those are the things. This is a real issue, a crisis throughout the United States, not only in Columbus City Schools. And so, we have to think differently about how we recruit teachers, how we retain teachers, and make sure that it's a profession because many went in because they wanted to work with kids. How do we make it attractive and also support them in ways where they feel like they want to keep doing this?
Teachers need paid more. Our economy is faltering right now, and prices are going up with everything their compensation needs raised. We need the funds to be able to compensate them properly for the times. One of my plans to establish universal childcare for CCS, for our district, but it's also for our teachers' children and our staff's children as well, as a benefit for them and another incentive for them to work in our district. But ultimately, they do need compensated more, they need respected more, and part of implementing universal childcare is to start teaching our youth in their earliest years, zero to five, when the brain is the most proliferous. And in the earliest years is when you start to learn social emotional learning and teacher-student respect and relationship and how to behave in a classroom. And so, just jumping right in at age five is not enough, and it really makes it hard for our teachers, so.
Thank you. We will now transition to our closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute to make a closing statement or statement.
My name is Liz Caslin Turner, and I'm a proud Columbus resident with deep roots in this community. I will be honest with you guys, this has been a three-year journey up to this point with you tonight. The last 18 months specifically, I have spent educating myself on not only the Columbus City Schools, board governance, and community partnerships. I have built partnerships and relationships with many of the organizations here tonight. Thank you guys for hosting this forum. Not only do I have the personal passion, I have the professional expertise to do this work. I believe that we should champion communication. Beyond anything than that, I believe in listening, listening to our parents who want the best for their children, the teachers who go hard in their classrooms, and the students who continue to dream big. My name is Liz Caslin Turner, and again, I'm asking you for your support, May 6th. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Teresa Hannah, and I would like to say that I am ready to take the mantle of leadership that is needed for our Board of Education. I want to say that I need your support. I need you to make sure that if you have any issues or, you know, you need someone to be available and really put in the time and the work that is going to be required and needed to do the job that is me. I am passionate, I have a vision, and I am not afraid to execute. I have over 30 years of professional work experience in information technology, project management, education, and also, and community activism. And so, I just want to say that if I will fight for my grandchildren and my children, I will definitely fight for yours as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Patrick Katsmeyer, and I'm going to take half of my last 60 seconds to answer a couple of questions that I did get to answer before. First, on LGBTQ, we live in a time when the state government is attacking, and federal government is attacking, our LGBTQ friends. We need to defend them. I think there's a lot of ways we can do that creatively. I think there's also ways that, there's also times that we will need to take a stand. If it looks like some of the recent legislation that came across requires districts to report LGBTQ kids, there's no way in hell that I'm ever going to be part of any system that is outing these kids. That's ridiculous. With the administration, I think there are places where we can cut, and I think there's also places like the Grants Department that has not had, that has lost some employees over the last few years. So, I'm sorry, I'm out of time, but thank you very much, Patrick Katsmeyer, three kids in the district, and thanks for being here, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Jermaine Kennedy. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for listening and caring about the future of Columbus City Schools. And I like to thank this, this is the first forum that I've seen a young person in the leadership role, asking questions. So, I love to see our young people in these positions. I'm an educator, a parent, a CCS parent, two kids in the district, passionate about education, and I believe Columbus City Schools has, can be the opportunity and really be a model district for, across the nation, in the way that we show up as a community, in the way that we educate, in the way that we are just developing this, our city. But it's going to require leadership that is committed to this work. And so, I believe I am qualified and have the skill sets for that, and would definitely love your support, May 6th. Dr. J for CCS. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy.
Hello, everyone. Keys for CCS. Keys for students. Keys unlocking opportunities. My name is Janice Keys, and I am running for Columbus City School Board because I, again, believe in the power of education. As a mother of four successful graduates from Columbus City Schools, I understand what's necessary for our students, which is good resources in the schools, the teachers having the right resources, as well as empowering our parents. I am a parent advocate. I am here and I am committed to our students. I'm committed to our teachers as well as our community and grudging our students. Keys for Columbus City Schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Carrie Lumpkin. The reason why I'm standing is because I'm very honored to even just be sitting up here in the seat. That means for me that if you want change, I'm asking for your vote. Yes, I am a hard worker, 34 years of working with the community. I actually, if you know Carrie Lumpkin, the Lumpkin name is very known on the South Linden. That was my father-in-law, Clarence Lumpkin. Not only that, my grandmother was the first black lady that helped Eleanor Roosevelt in Columbus, Ohio. She built the, she was the president of the Democrat Party. I am very excited to be here. I am very excited to run. And the reason why, my why is I have a granddaughter right now that's in Columbus City Schools. I do not believe that she needs to move to New Albany, anybody needs to move to New Albany, Upper Arlington, to get a good value education. I promise, I will not be alone as you push for Carrie Lumpkin. I will promise you this, that I will be a voice for each and every one of you. It will be built, and it will turn around. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Munir Lynch. Thank you so much for being here with us today, and thank you to the sponsoring organizations that had us today. We are truly building a campaign that is centering the entire community, and we want to reflect what we need and what we want for Columbus City Schools. I'm a graduate of the district. I've spent years and years educating in every single Columbus City Middle School, most of the high schools. I know what the lived experience of a CCS student is, and I am hoping to bring that experience to you all as a board member. experience to you all as a board member. I would love support with, we are knocking doors, we are making calls, we are sending texts. I'm an organizer, so I have to tell you those opportunities. MunirForSchools.com, M-O-U-N-I-R for schools, same on all the socials. Please ask more questions, keep the conversation going, and get involved with our campaign in whatever way if you felt motivated by us today. So thank you. My name is Munir Lynch, and I hope you have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch.
Good evening, everyone. And once again, I just want to say thank you for coming. My name's Kimberly Mason, and I wanted to say, you know, back in 2018, when somebody tapped my shoulder and said, hey, will you run for school board? I did. I did that in 2019. And while I had a very successful grassroots campaign, just fell a little short of being able to continue the work that I'm trying to do now. And so I asked that, as you think about what does a leader look like? Who is somebody that reflects the community you serve? Who is somebody that embodies the values and traits and wants to kind of be able to have the conversation with you as a school board leader that you think of, Kimberly Mason, when you go to vote? Once again, I appreciate your time and thanks for being a friend.
Thank you.
It's been great being here. Dr. Antoinette Miranda. And I'm running for Columbus City School Board because I think I have the expertise, both professionally and personally. I have been committed to Columbus City Schools since arriving at Ohio State University. I've done many, many projects, worked with many, many teachers in Columbus City Schools. Like I said, my two children have gone there, including my son, who is orthopedically disabled, and so we went through the whole system. And I am grateful, grateful what special ed teachers did for him. He got an associate's degree at Columbus State and was very successful. I believe I have the expertise, being on the state school board allowed me to really understand about policy and legislation and how we have to fight the system, and that's what I've been doing. And so this gives me an opportunity, I should say that I will be retiring July 31st. And so as I used to say, when one door closes, another opens, and this is what I think I am supposed to do. I am passionate, committed, and I would love to represent Columbus City School as your school board member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Trebold. In French, that means very bold, bold for schools. Thank you for having us tonight. I have some pint-sized protesters myself. Back in 2020, when my three kids and I protested post-George Floyd for Black Lives Matter, they were 11, middle one, I can't think of, do the math right now, but my youngest was less than one years old and was very proud of them marching with me. But I am a CCS mom. I have a background in financial advising and wealth management. I am a nurse, business development, and my vision is to bring in investors and to establish universal childcare. This was on my platform when I ran for House of Representatives last year, so since 2023. And this is on all of our states around the country's radar right now, on the front page of The Dispatch, which I meant to mention earlier. This, this last week, lack of childcare cost Ohio billions. So it is now more than ever that we have this opportunity to roll out universal childcare, and I will be doing that. I believe that I have the expertise for this role. I am a very big picture thinker, and oftentimes I'm thinking about the big picture and all the details and all the moving parts that fit together all the time. And I believe that unique perspective is just what the board needs right now. Julie Trebold, bold for schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to close this event by thanking all the candidates for their participation in our democratic process and for having a very civil conversation.
This recording will be viewable on the Clare United Methodist Church website and on social media channels. We urge all of you to make a voting plan now. Early voting started yesterday, April 8th, and Election Day is May 6th. Thank you all and have a good night.